Start the building. But it could be Ryan Marshall. There's probably some people who don't know him, he is replacing Philip. Philip Desmond who have resigned for his district and Ryan is. Those right, but all doors down from the players away from the clubhouse and hosted. So if anybody have any questions or anything we have to talk to.
What the agents to live a life when you have this case of America and to be a public. Indivisible with lefty and justice. Give me a number.
Take care. Just go ahead, Brittany.
Give me a number.
Present.
Carolyn Wood. Here. Here. Carolyn Wood here. Ryan Marshall here. You're ready to present.
All right, so our first order of business is to elect our vice president. Do I have an nomination for my vice president?
Make a motion that. The. Select Carolyn Wood.
Do I have a sign?
Okay.
Right, I have a first and a second for Carolyn Wood to serve as vice president. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, all opposed? Motion here. All right, now we're gonna look at the events from December seventeenth.
Movement to be set in. Aye.
We have a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion here. And now.
Were you, were you just talking about the seventeen, I meant for all events presented. But if we wanted to get.
Oh, no, I like it. I mean, you shouldn't say that.
Yeah, well, I didn't say it, but I've been all events presented.
You want to make a move back?
Yeah.
All right, so you're making the motion to.
And yeah. That all events presented be approved after this. And I said all.
All right, and then all in favor?
Aye.
And all those opposed? All right, motion here. Now, the bank reconciliation due to the year end that has to be. Joined with January, so we will. Pay for that. February and December. And we can have our proof of January change.
The January change package be approved after presented again or again. I will say.
All right, we have a first. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Here. All right, we have public comments, is there anybody that has time to provide public? Tell me.
No.
Public comments, more of a pushing for guidance. False alarm, another family. Law systems and we are practically responding on false alarms. We did tell seven. Close to fifty of those were just the one set alone.
Okay.
Several of those were four to five reappearances at the same height. So how would we, how would we, in the fact that the alarm company, what can you guys do to support us? They limited the entire figure out the possibility of Congress, some of the possible things we're thinking. Potential true emergence.
Great, well, I think that we can get that to the community, we want to do this next month, I mean, we know how it works, but. Really, no like for us to put that on the agenda to discuss with our. Police department, because they're the ones that manage.
Right, which I, I tend to everything to keep right. I know.
Okay.
A lot of the mess up, but. We need to try to solve from the front around, maybe we could reach out to the. I think that it's something that's. But it seems to be a growing problem. We've already gone forward here and we're on a pretty. Here and just our overall run volume, we're.
Right.
Fun stuff, but you guys are doing.
And so are those because the alarms go off and you get pulled out as a group like dispatch or the fire?
And the biggest piece of.
Is it like somebody pulled the alarm or is it the?
He said probably eighty-five percent of it is the activate the smoke alarm cookie. And then the alarm company calls them, they don't answer their phone. Don't have.
Do you buy any chance of as soon as that we got into? Yeah, and then you can speak. Get educated to that. Time. You can join us back in February, we can all set that. But I think we need to have all this of repeated vendors. So that we can get homeowners names and like what can we do, but I think we all know. We're not up against.
And we try. Get the problem.
Because.
We have, we have. My.
This.
Consider.
Does the court notice, I don't have, does this address fire alarms too, or is it just?
Court notices alarm across the board, that's the state of Virginia. So what happens is whether there are false alarm on our side or false alarm on the fire term side. When I get the information, I send out a letter, a notice to the address that we get, obviously I don't have the name usually because it's just. Letting you know that there was a false alarm, that there's an organs in place that defaults to register your alarms, so that we can have this information. Letter gets sent out. And then people come slowly, they start coming into register their alarms, we have the information, so we can contact people. What I found out recently on several of the ones that I went through. They are new residents who have just bought that home or they're residents who have just moved in or renting. And the prior tenant or the prior owner had an alarm and the new tenant or the new person hasn't turned it off. Because they don't want on the alarm. So we're getting false alarms out too.
And a lot of them are really, and they're lost.
A lot of, most new law are waiting for us to even start this thing.
But the, the. Violation will go to the homeowner, not the tenant. So if it's a corporate. Violation, then you'll find to personally on the call.
And we aren't actually issued any bond.
Remember that I haven't gotten any better to that point. It's a, so it's a, it's a twelve month, twelve month rolling calendar. Are they so, you're getting, you got, you get violations within twelve months, you don't have so many violations, it falls off and starts over, it's not a. It's not a continuous where once you're in the system, you stay in the system forever. It's, it's a rolling calendar basically, so that. Basically, we're not penalizing you for the rest of your life.
For two days.
Yeah, because you make a mistake, it's in the teenager, it's like it rolls and then it falls off. So that there's opportunities so that you can get back under control. But there are some that have, that are getting to the point where they're probably going to start sending letters of potential fines. But again, it's, it's getting people to register them, you're getting homeowners to come and register their alarms. Since we don't have, technically have a zero place to enforce the penalties. If it's a ghost of the owner. The landlord. He probably gets the. Name and address, it would be a few dollars. Uh, no, because the rentals, when people rent, the utilities are put in there now.
I have one little question. Well, it's like our sewer, if our sewer doesn't get paid, it's not the tenant that is a violation, it's the.
About talking, Richard, last thing, yes.
Or half of those, I didn't have names and I'm talking. Chad address.
Yeah.
But then, then you see that they're listed with eight different names and that'll.
Can we add that to the agenda for next month officially to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments? Moving on to whole business, we need to consider quote for weekly or monthly cleaning of the government center. Maybe we'll go over the movements. Um, we look at bays, I know two of you want to, we looked at bays, I have a breakdown sheet here, I want to call monthly and weekly for a year. One could give us to be. It'd be one of the ones for a week, seven years. Waiting for five hours, if we pay them fifteen dollars an hour over the course of a twenty-six, three pay period, it would be thirty-nine hundred hours. The lowest quote we have is for a year, it would be sixty-three, fifty-six. Well, it's a lot less, that's for sure. And they would not have to be insured or office, because they could be deployed to help. Do we want to think about this, or do we, does anybody have any? Thoughts?
Groups.
We can't provide that, we can't provide that enough. Maybe more time. Members for that.
Wait.
Then would they have to wait until, until we do a little bit of conference? But then would we need to act on it and ensure? That's what, that's what's right, that's what we're saying that. It would be safe, we want to insure and these are the free quotes that you may get from spending from pre companies that have been long insured. I think it's. I think we. We have been, we have to. Insurance. Everything's our favorite. Well, I think like that it's been a lot of hurt, because we need to get there. I must for best months.
Yeah.
In that I'm covering. So we should probably start there, check that. So I'll make the motion to table this for next month. With the added element that we're verifying that the insurance will cover. I bring someone hard time to do this, and if there's anything else we need to consider in that month's time, we need to, you know. Bet out that this could be. Be complicated, but we revisit it.
Line for the dedication.
Maybe that.
Second.
All right, so let's go on that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, now we're going to need to discuss, consider the ordinance to create and the ordinance violation here. And by, you have said in one of the meetings you have discussed. Being part of the council, I think that you. I think voted all wishes to approve the actor. They're not going to be a violation.
Yeah.
And so this is just basically a review which Samantha has reviewed the ordinance. So I can fire fourteen, the motion to. Create and accept the ordinance.
I'll say. Well, I'll, I'll make a.
All, we have a motion to establish the ordinance as created and the ordinance filing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. If everybody can remember to sign. The briefing, he's got a convention. You know.
This is the next, I have a business, consider the open seat of the play commission and that is an appointment. By the town council president. Got a lot of response from the Facebook post that I did or. And. Hello, thanks for coming, I've got several positions still for that, and so I'm pointing Chad Park. Do you think that position?
Then I'm going to just point to by the.
The addition of. The search fire in the appointment. I'm sorry, oh, I didn't.
Yeah, you say.
Oh. From our. Got a second?
Awesome.
So we have a motion for the father to serve another term of the commission, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Here. All right, and next is consider a replacement for the commission. And that. Consider expired terms with the redevelopment commission. And. You want to build chapel and that is town executive and those agree to serve another term. That would take a fair up and then. Mariah Rogers' term was up and she has agreed to serve again, so that. Town executive appointments for RDC. So now we have a citizen member appointed by the town council. And Grant Shields came in last night while we were in executive session, because we had a RDC who. Originally late for that evening, and so I spoke with him today and I have to agree with him that. Notifications about the RDC meetings last year were scarce. I, you know, I.
Correct.
Yes, and I was understanding in his position how maybe he could have been better, and he did miss some meetings. But we had not informed him that he had been removed, which I don't know if that's a formal action or not, so. He, he would like to still serve and I feel like in all fairness, it wasn't really always his fault.
Just all of the, the day on the RDC, that, that, that town council, well, will we go ahead and make this, okay, I'll, I'll move it these days.
I'll second that. All right, we have a motion for Grant Shields to serve another term on the RDC, all those in favor?
Aye. Yeah, which we turn.
All right, next is the expired term. And that is for Brady Mark, and she has agreed to serve another term. Did that was kind of due for the town. Your petition.
Followed to be repeated. Second.
All those in favor?
I don't work on it.
So the next is consider placement for members of public. And so we need a council member to serve in. Lauren have agreed to serve on public works.
Are we going to nominate him?
I don't know, we need to, but I will listen.
Okay.
Second, I'll sign. All those in favor? Right, and we're. Because I have some, I thought that it was. Council president appointment, but it's actually appointments by. The town council person, and so I would have been with some of the people who had contacted me to.
Sure, that makes it easy on who's been.
So, next order of business is the name department update.
Do, we had, we had, I know we had. I think the mission being that. Yeah. The, the new council president was there as well too, but we don't have this guy in this stuff, but, and we did have it almost, almost. Yeah.
So we can vote on it after that.
I don't know that we vote on that mission then.
Okay, I'm just.
They're presented, but usually, and not trying to put, not trying to put.
No, it's.
It has been actually, yes. Usually we have just, you know, the, the minutes and, and just read over, just to see what all happened.
It was pretty much.
Yeah, that.
Yeah, we elected all.
Which, my friend is not, my man, not taking away. This is completely, completely going to have some sort of. Eighteen, same day, first schedule. Yeah, and I would like to see if. I mean, I guess our. President isn't here, but. Huh? Is it only a lot of, okay, I didn't see it, what everybody could be able to attend to.
No.
Okay, that's all I have.
All right, police department.
Okay, all the service in time to. I mean, I'm just taking. I said January. Nothing extraordinary. Say for all. Okay, so, with this, like, for this, we just, there were two hundred. And then so basically, when obviously they're out of bound, they're stopping by minutes, the private business department officer, just. Probably won't talk to you to make sure that it's nothing serious. Real, they just basically. And then we have people that submit for like vacation checks, and how they're on vacation, they submit to their side for their own vacation. No drugs. No drug busting, all these, what's going on, we've been going through this, we've been in our house, they're invested, we're paying them on quite a bit, but. Um. Next order of business, Dodge Charger, the twenty-two thousand dollar car. The power service, the engine, that's what happened in the car. The quotes, the fix the car, baby John, who normally does our maintenance. The place to go for the cars, ten thousand one hundred seventy dollars, ninety cents. To get it replaced by Dodge Chrysler, and the newer Chrysler over in Plantfield, eleven thousand one hundred seventy-nine dollars. Car is worth only seventy-five hundred or eighty-five hundred dollars, it's running in perfect condition, so running perfectly. That being said, my apartment apart, not worth fixing. Put money into a five year, it's not worth putting another ten thousand dollars to. Put the money into a part of the. With that being said, I know this has been, this has been a topic that nobody really likes talking about. We've got to do something about parts. Miles on our cars are going up exponentially. Or maybe they grow. Get, get a proper replacement to replace parts, fixes, parts, fleets, so that the mileage is spread out more, the maintenance is spread out along the years. We should have a list of some of the quotes, some of the ideas that I've gotten, there is one more that I have that is not on the list because I just got it today. Any more of course, but then. Some of the little Martin's milk police cars, point twenty-five Durango that they have. They're relatively low miles compared to most of our cars. The vehicle, we're going to run about twenty-six thousand dollars a piece, that comes with all lighting equipment. And they're kind of basically ready to go, other than we have to put my part in the car. And the parts still here, so. They're having them checked out by the, their service department, they're having them checked out by lighting, DAPN, lighting, those fittings, make sure that. I believe it's a good deal, and then there's obviously several different options, um, that I don't weigh down. And it's just about spending money.
Yeah. First, I noticed that most of the vehicles here, like, we have no more, so. Citizen, it doesn't have more, especially where we're at.
Well, if you buy anything, you just not going to have.
Um, even these others that don't say no warranty, no?
The very first ones, the Durango, was that. Two X Martin little vehicles, they're not, they're not going to get the ones from those.
Even those leaves.
They're those with the version. The one, the mark, the one's.
Oh, okay, all right, I was trying to see.
Yeah, so the, the ones that are being bought brand new or considered brand new, the two point point three Durangos. Those are still new, they've never been sold, those will come with some type of factor, we want to. We'd have to break those leases down over two or three year period to pay those leases.
Can you tell me which ones were, that the Durangos that were from.
They're not, yeah, because this was already.
Oh, the ones you can talk about that are pretty anymore are turned, they're.
They're. But they're not on this.
They're not on that.
Okay.
Information today, just went and talked to the sales guy, any more, he kind of showed me a couple of them that they have, and gave me the numbers today.
Do you know if they have already bought those at, you know, two, or are they on the sign, three?
Any more, already from the Martin'sville that orchestrated them off, got them. I tried, I tried several times to get Martin'sville to respond when we brought, and they just finally got back.
And that, I, I know you and I have been trying to catch each other this week, and I. It's been insane.
Absolutely.
But, so my brother-in-law has been chief deputy for many years down in Platte County, and he said that a lot of times. When they get rid of their cars, they. When they get rid of their cars, they go donate to smaller communities and to, you know, Marshall. So I'm going to put some pressure on Rich Meyer, I mean, like that's.
So Rich, um, they, they turn all their, they turn all their cars back in, they're trading back in for, so they can get credit on their cars. Which is what my partners, what they did, Martin's will trade their cars in because they're getting money to buy their cars.
So they don't lease, they buy?
They buy.
Okay, alright, so they do not, who leases, I'm sorry.
So, the government leasing office was designed for smaller agencies who can't afford to spend drop seventy thousand dollars with paying seventy thousand one in one time. The way a government lease works is, what's just our simple number, they'll say the car's sixty thousand dollars. You break it up over three years, obviously we're paying twenty thousand dollars a year. When we sign the deal, we get the title, title is in marketing, title is obviously registered, we have the title. The dealership or whoever the bank is that's holding the claim is on the back of the title, that's first name. We still hold that title. When we make that last payment, that last, that third year payment, they send us a letter of release of that claim. That is ours.
Anybody? Anybody?
There is always buyout like if me or you were to go to the dealership and do a lease at the end of that lease and the buyout will be counted in. For government leases, there's not a buy.
And there's no negotiating, it's set.
It is set.
But you don't get to turn it in? I mean, like pay it back a little second of the year, I'm just saying it's terminated to the left.
You have, you have a package warranty. So the test, the test, the test in front of the cases, yes, you can terminate it. And not have to pay the rest of it. But you cannot buy another car until the original account of that lease is up. Because that, they're, they, they bring us the patents, agency can get cars and like, oh, I can't afford this car anymore, if they want to get this bigger better, newer car, I'm going to turn this.
Well, that's one whole point of the leases, so you're driving a new car every.
But you've got the whole period of time, the contract is two or three years.
It'd be no difference if you leased a car, you can't turn it in early, you, you're going to pay out the warranty.
Yeah, there'd be a pay difference.
Okay.
So, um. We did get, I mean, the, the one I drive, it was a donation. From the state. The state. They, they won't even consider it again, I mean, it's, they have long lists, you know, they, they, they go through, so the state gets cars and they go through every agency that the state has, the whole state, they did personally do all this. And then they get a law person academy that's did those stuff. And then if there's anything left and worse donated, then they start going down the list of, the big list of people they have that wants some. We got a car a year and a half ago, I think. So I would say we're very, 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 very low on that list for the state.
So are the municipalities in Martinsville. So there's awesome.
Absolutely, Morgantown, Carrigan.
What is that?
Yeah, they're still.
That's it.
What's a mortgage on like, like close two thousand and thirty, twenty three, is that still like a, whatever, same as mine, you know, like twenty five? I don't mind.
I'll say you have full lease, you have.
The full lease are full.
Full.
Full warranty, you know, it's two years or.
Guy's just going to move on. Yeah, it's never been sold, so they, they can, they can, the dealership can then still say, yeah, it's still back to warranty, you get the full warranty because it's never been actually sold to somebody before. If I'm looking, if I'm looking. Best bank for the buck, I'm looking at the best bank for the buck. My opinion, the best bank for the buck is, is it, if you're looking at probably twenty three Durango, you're looking at spending almost sixty thousand dollars. The best thing for the buck, in my opinion, would be to buy two of the twenty point Durangos that Martin's will turn in. You're going to spend fifty two thousand, get two cars that are outfitted already.
But we have to ensure.
Sure.
So is this going to add to your budget or do we need to talk to our information about it to see what kind of mobiles you're asking?
It's exciting, come on up with these budgets.
That's what I feel that they have the interest to not, we need to get a little. Just meaningful strategies to go and see what kind of things we have. But in the meantime, can you possibly look or reach out to these other marshals and find out that they've ever gotten a car donated through Martinsville?
And I know Morgantown, they just pay up twenty point Durango, they bought their Durango twenty point, that's their. For a fund that's bought.
Our county money, all of us here paid for those Durangos to be sold to anymore, in my opinion, like, you know, our taxpayer dollars bought those Durangos. And it is common in other counties or marshals to get things from the county chair. Then I feel like we're going to need to press that. The Durangos just being of the twenty twenty, those came from Martin's City, right?
Yes.
Those were Martin's City. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. You see what I'm saying, you know, like I want to see how common is it that?
I've been doing this for almost thirty years and I, the, the, when I got them off in the state police, that's the first time I've ever, when they said that they were going to do it, I fell out of my chair. I, I had never heard of.
Maybe check the T L.
State, they, they, they call up the same.
They press.
I know, they.
They, they, they all fall, so like the thing, it was the case of us, which is where they come from, which is where I got mine from. I can't, like, when I originally talked to them, I talked to the state police, state police said we could save surplus because she, the lady there at the time, and she's still there. She gets all of the cars and she determines where they go. So me and Harvard send them to her, I have days moving to her.
Well, that's, I mean, you're doing a lot of translation, so people not lease that have vehicles might have, because they're, they're in administration, they're doing lots of, lots of movement, you know, in the state.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I checked with the state surplus, state surplus controls that, state surplus isn't giving out cars right now to. To mostly.
Right.
Uh, I reached out to Hammond County, um, Hammond County doesn't have anything that didn't rid of, right, so. Lebanon, Lebanon leases their, Lebanon leases their cars from Enterprise, however. Enterprise will do any lease in Enterprise, you got to buy all these, so. I'm like, okay, never mind.
Yeah, so we're going to need to talk with the financial viability, the budget is, what would we do? Like, even if we want to do this, or if we, you know, that's something that's the next step, we're going to find out what. I'm scared by news.
Well, I'm.
So I'm wrong. Try to wait for the dog. Piece of junk, I mean, the explorers, actually there's two more. Gosh, I need to see a slide, especially a used Durango, I think we're just, we're not going to get around. Six months.
At first, when I talked to CSO, they got one fifty silver out of four dollars. I, I think I picked up a service center. In this community, then, and that can be, but. Big of trouble. Think of first about the store price, it's, it's a brand, it's a little bit, a couple thousand dollars more, I mean, they're all within a couple thousand each other. I mean, obviously, I would much rather, again, I would much rather just get on some type of plan where every, every fourth year, we're, we're adding another part of the fleet, so one of these old cars, when it finally takes a crack. We, we're not in, we're not in this situation right here, but they're saying. Hey, I mean, if I'm asking you for seventy thousand dollars to buy something, I'm going to say this, and we don't have any money, and then now of us. Piling, piling miles, four miles, cars, and since we're compiled, our problem is long term. Because we're, we're adding miles of cars. The lease is about four years, it's whatever time we want to, okay? Uh, so again, if it's a sixty thousand dollar car and we want to pay it off in three years, we, we twenty thousand dollars a year, over three years. So again, I. Yeah, new car is the best option, but.
Now, who? What organization do they lease to?
Depends on who we buy the car from.
In other words, basically it's something set up by the D M.
So if, if we buy some Ford, it's been Ford, if we buy one Chevy, it's the GM. Um, if it's, there's somebody that doesn't have one, there's a. Southern Hingle County, both of them, they do leases. These do the same thing, but it gives, gives us the freedom to pick, like if we find like the twenty point three Durango, those are Durango around Kentucky. That dealership right now gives them a lot of, the government leases out of state. This bank that I talked to, who I was given to buy, um, kept it away. Um, they can, they can facilitate the government lease if we were to do something like that, because it doesn't, they're just lending the money and saying, they're doing the same process, but.
True.
Yeah.
Alright, so to give you answers to most, when we, like, do you see if the council feels confident to take two council members and. Uh, Chief Brad to do with me to give these answers? Right, would you like to serve on that? Because everybody else has a council there. Okay, anybody else want to serve for Brad too?
I can.
Right. There's three, you guys work on that for next month and I will have our. Maybe some advisors will give, where is the possibility to do something? Because that's about a year to me, it's.
I, I'm clear, again, I'm, I'm partying for a month of budget for next year, and there's already a line item there full of planning for this, for the future moving forward, because it's got to be.
Well, but before we go any further, then, uh, you said here that, uh, that is, uh. That the engine will be the year needed, uh, replaced, we'll look at ten K, or we're not going to go ahead and go ten K as far.
No, I, I'm not asking.
Okay, well, I didn't know.
This would be insane.
Well, yeah, but I, I didn't see anything else.
Yeah, I think the committee can decide out of this. To get the most out of it and we should put the money in, whatever we need.
We do.
The only other thing I have that I'd rather bomb here, uh, body cameras, obviously, you know, we've got a frame for the body camera, we're within that frame though. It's going to take four to six weeks for the body cameras to come in, which means we will, we will owe that money for four to six weeks. I want to, I think I've had to place that order. Again, it's a reimbursement, and that money was already set to come out of needed. The help. The help of this situation, the car situation, um. The body cameras, I can actually split that up, where I'm paying all, like, if the money's going to come out of needed. Instead of us paying all thirty some thousand dollars for body cameras upfront, the body camera company will let me split that hook, maybe split it in half and we pay, we take the delivery, we pay half of it, and then we get reimbursed for that half. And then we pay the other half, and then that way, kind of help physically be responsible with the money, so that we're not, I'm not paying any thirty thousand dollars for body cameras in the head.
Right.
Another twenty or thirty thousand dollars out of another four.
Alright, can we put the committee on lease vehicle replacement or the work on next month's agenda?
So can I, is it okay if I go ahead and place the order for the body?
Do you need a special vote on that?
I know that we did.
Yeah. All of you. Thank you.
Well, we got the month of Sundays before, the way to do the fourth quarter, I don't have a lot of time. I would say it's longer to.
They can protect.
Yeah. I know, I asked, it's going to be a bull, it's going to be pretty good. See eighty million seven hundred and forty four. Close this month. And our average day, the close was two hundred and eighty one thousand seven hundred. Just going to receive four point two pieces, ready for the whole song. Starting to make. Well, yeah, that's not printing up, that's a. Yeah, that's not expansion. And if you look back from September to December, it's aggressively kind of gone up. That has to do with infiltration. You have some pressure issues we're still taking care of, but your infiltration, you're looking at.
It needs to like.
It can be, we got those same intentions. Uh, we're, we're getting into that. You, you got, you got a plan, you got something on. Uh, proportion. The other part they mentioned is about the two vote for. Urban schedule, and it's supposed to be done by. We have a seat for a plastic, a plastic piece for the phone here to be resolved. Coming in the executive reform holiday, I'm seeing a six. Orange print is going on the back. Uh, included in the area of reports, it's limited live, and they are bigger. You want to look at. Information looks, it should be there. This is kind of snapshot of the point it is, it's a part of the whole year. Um, so everything you need to know is possible.
Anything that should be on and on that is just.
That's huge, eighty four percent, so. If you had one more one. Other than that, and everything else is good, I still have eight months left in my, or three or whatever. Year long, pretty long.
Yeah.
I think that was March.
Supposed to have been at ninety thousand dollars a month on investment blow.
Yes, but I've got a paper. The other thing, just getting delivered back there, it's just going to be loading it back, we unloaded the. Huge. Sixty thousand pounds of fuel and plants to.
I'm surprised if you get those brains back there.
Getting the mud.
Did it take any offense?
But that's in our orders, you, you know, you guys will not have this place up for twenty years, for one and a half. And in two thousand one, it's put in, it's same one, so hoping as new one, watch. We got that loaded today, everything was well. So other than that, everything we have now is on site. Mailings, these uniforms and everybody, like, you know, we try to think. No clue from product engineers, one gentleman's a lead to pick on them, yet they cannot. Like they do the work. Like they do it more.
Those were speaking, what did the parts that are in service, that's right.
Okay, and where they're still trying to bid.
Okay, but that's what they, that's what they said, and you have a. Anyway. The contract for continuing the the construction involved, which are good, right?
I signed for Triad, or are we talking about whether signing contracts to the new, even the purchase, the test, or the sold, or the reimbursed, or? No, I. Like.
No, it's just Tommy, the, I I I know that there was a, they asked the contracts.
That was a service agreement.
Oh, did they sign? Okay, I was insured, I'm sorry, I just didn't know that she ended up signing it for, I.
I can be another copy of that period. We haven't signed an assignment, have we, soon?
Oh.
They wanted us to sign that today for tonight, and we said we had to pass away, and we had it, so I'm sorry that you did not become.
No, okay, that's, that's concerning. I wanted to. But Triad is slowly lost people over the, since the main guy was in charge back, the president, about years ago.
I'll be one job.
Yeah, I was before driving, it's the main guy. I'm D.
So I don't remember.
Big tall guy, I was there, I actually think it's, but he was. Switched over to Lou and Jonathan, and then they seemed like it's got less and less since that.
I can't answer that question, sorry, if this is a floating in here, I'll tell you something. Um, that, and I'm concerned prices are going to go up. Let me service.
We have information. These, if you have a Monday, Tuesday, next week, we'll meet in here and have a conversation with Mary Ann, I'm sure. Because we told them that people are trying to meet, they just have a Monday.
Okay, yeah, that was, sorry, it's on your phone, I'm sure.
Okay. Like, I know you feel a lot, to be honest with you.
You know, that's on my map, that's. So that, uh, okay, so I don't know the word, it's going to be after. True. Uh.
They said it's going to be seasons, but. But they think, oh, oh, that's something.
I didn't know. He just speak now, I mean. Uh, you didn't put a source, uh, one thing I wanted to learn about is, yeah, anything else, and. Some of those was really. Down, but.
I would say, really, you know. This was their surf waters.
This is their second. This is their second one, we didn't have a party anything at all last year. And and I told them, now, you can put this on me, because I did tell them, we also do wastewater treatment plant. Maybe I should have gone out there and shown you.
They show up at their. Uh.
They did, but.
Well, we say before we.
Maybe they aren't familiar with the whole parking lot too, because it just seemed like they didn't plow a whole parking lot, and we have a lot of traffic. Going down there.
Twelve inch, you know, yeah, big truck. Their first year and nothing, yeah. Huge this year.
Yeah, and we bought all the parking stalls, and, you know, we did all that, we did mine, but. Yeah, it was just part of the neighborhood. And there, and it's a big, it's a big parking lot, so.
Yeah.
And we just have big trucks coming through.
From here, we deliver it, we shoot back, we want to, I got a lot of that, and then we do it.
You get each and all, man. You could walk, you know, you can.
We call, what we call breaking.
Yeah, we like, you know, and they did go right.
He's back.
They came right back out.
But you can walk for six.
Yeah. Yeah. I think once they knew.
Yeah.
What they had to do, they.
Again, it's just like what we did that last time, we got a, there's a, a year or four, when we had a place, we had to save everything, finish it itself, all my sales, I mean, you're just dealing with that.
Uh, small town field, and one of our other clients, they're. Not so bad, I feel, but he worked one day, he really did one day, and he would have quit, you know. They had a current president, uh, having to do.
Oh, yeah, it was very significant.
Um.
Can you help?
The only thing I had was, you guys think we need to have a executive session or some. Especially the new members.
Yes.
Kind of get an idea of where the board wants. Board in the future.
What do you mean, so he doesn't?
Find out how you guys want to fund utility in the future.
Well, we need to get it, the council is prepared. And what we need to do is the, uh, that's going on with county with the potential to ask for, like.
All right.
But definitely by March, we will.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea, if you know, um, some kind of, I just want to shout out. All of the councils, what you need to do, and how you guys want to achieve, as far as time, basically, doing, talk to people, and things like. All right, do you have a question? Yep, thank you very much.
All right. We have a, all the.
I'm seeing.
And then R C, we have not had any meetings, so we're just.
And I think we're just.
Falling worse.
Now, I.
You may want to talk to him about it, but he wasn't here, you're not, the world.
Oh, I'm getting off.
Maybe you're curious about that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, Ricky has. President of House, did he need to discuss the committee business?
Um, so ordinance twenty-five oh two, been invoiced for Triad for about. I think one thousand. Okay, and community across the grand that they're doing. So we need to add some money to four of the funds that I have listed on the. Uh, the fund names here, um, this amount of money, Danny had a cover sheet. Forty left, that would cover on the project. Supposed to budget for twenty-five for this year, so we didn't, so. We're going to have to do that to cover the, uh, or the invoice.
We're going to do it, so I'm going to move. As we said. Okay, now, I I would also admit, uh, I'm sorry, I'm going to admit that with a consultation with the, uh, financial group that we got. Want to make sure that's part of the function.
Can you restate your question?
Okay, I I would have to prove, okay, this appropriation as presented. All the consultation from, uh, from the financial group that advised us to ensure that this is exactly. Possible, because I know we have a deadline on this, which is February, what, ten? There's six times. Okay, so that's my moment.
Have a second.
Sir?
All right, so this will be reviewed by our management strategy before the thing is done. Then I can be comfortable voting for that myself, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who's? Vote here.
Yeah, this is, with their approval, so it's not like they made, uh, made them be at the time is now.
Well, you will sign it now, and then.
You need to have one that's appropriate. Well, why do you need it one that's appropriate? Right, well, we're dealing with the, especially if the, if something, you know, we're invited to state, it's always been, it's not, I mean, you can, it's always one, and it's just so we have some sort of. Radio or something to cover us, saying, this is what we did to the funds, and this is how we met our. Okay. So that's. No. Or it's for legislation. Yeah, but but when you, but but when you're an incorporation or a suspicion, you're needing to state ones, that, that, you know, it's supposed to be one.
Add that to the review of the. The management strategy, to see if we can make any orders or not.
It is.
For additional appropriate, maybe we need to vote on that.
Yep, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, that's the point.
Is there any additional, um, topics from the council? About twenty-three patients, you know, the version of these, pretty typical. And this, we know, I know, entertaining motion.
Boo, can you hear?
One of the.
Aye.
Thank you. That's hangless. We can have a.
That was the first time.
Uh, yeah. That's going to be the president's appointment. And you're.
We were in the second.
Okay, I can put it right there.